The whole cost of the, um.
I'm sorry, what?
Will this cover the whole cost of the early voting?
What?
Early voting grant.
Yes. Um, we have two grants. We have one for the agents' localities grant for fifty-four thousand two hundred and two. The other one is seventy-eight. You already accepted one. This is to accept the other.
But we should be covered on the total cost?
Yeah.
All right. How many people did this early voting?
Six hundred and seventy-eight.
How many?
Six hundred and seventy-eight.
Well, that was cost effective. That's okay. Was the, uh, what was the total cost for the early voting? Do you have a testament yet? I know we said that it covers, but, uh, we had the people in, they tested it, ended yesterday, and I was just wondering what the total cost were.
We haven't figured that out yet. Um, there was eight people every day as inspectors and sign-in people. And, um, we had two people in the office every day that stayed late or whatever, but that wasn't every day because some of them were either at four-thirty. So we had their overtime. It, it was costly.
Okay, well, I, I, I know it's costly, and we know this, you know, the grants covered it, okay, so I'm not worried about that. I mean, even if the grants didn't cover it, I would ask for more money to cover it, but I just wonder how much it costs.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
We haven't gotten it far.
Okay.
Still, tomorrow's the election too, so we've been a little sidetracked.
All right, we have a first and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All? Carries. Uh, next up, QC two resolution, uh, authorizing execution delivery of deeds for property sold. Have a first and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carries. Next up, the, the liquid tax conscious stats.
Yeah, actually, I mean, well, you'll just see the stats, uh, it's one point four million. And, uh, covered pretty much the taxes owed on the parcels that are sold. And also included in your pack, you should have the years from the past. Obviously, that is helpful to see the trend from previous years to, uh, this year. If there's any questions, I think we also have the list of all the purchases. And, uh, now they have up until, uh, the fifteenth of this month, pass, and then we'll, we'll come through with the statistics. Have to say with low attendance, I've heard complaints that people pay too much, so I think we did increase that.
We like that.
They did, huh?
I know, it doesn't make sense.
I hope they'll have a year to hand available budget report.
So, so there, we've had a bunch of discussions for any of these. Very fortunate to have questions.
Where are you?
Okay.
All right. On the budget review, uh, first up, we have libraries. This is on page seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, um, put forward the request to the, uh, Budget Officer for the, uh, Silver County Library Council in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carries. Uh, next up is the Sportsman's Federation. It's in the amount of, uh, forty-eight fifty, recommended by our书记.
Make a motion fast.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Close? The two going to the Board of Elections.
Sure. Well, uh, we have, uh, some substantial increases next year because of the fact that we have three elections next year. We have a presidential primary in April, we have congressional primary in June, and then we have the general. Uh, all of those require nine days of early voting. So that's twenty-seven days of early voting that we have to, uh, cover next year. As previously stated, we've used some shoebox money, forty-three thousand, we've got a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of these two grants that are new this year. That's a hundred and seventy-six thousand to help offset some of those costs. Um.
Sure. The capital project grant is only for machines, e-poll books, and things like that. Things that we would need to pull off the election. The other one, we can use, um, um, labor and paper rolls and things like that that we need for, for the election. So they're not all apples and oranges here. I mean, they're two different things that we can spend on. But all of it needs to be spent by two thousand twenty-one. One of them runs out at the end of two thousand twenty, the other one runs out at two thousand twenty-one. So then we're on our own.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any, and every contract's different, I understand that. Is there any reason during these early elections times, we can't, uh, stay or to start some of our people? Have them work, um, so you got coverage on Saturday and Sunday?
Well, you have to have coverage per election districts. And there's a formula in New York State election law that requires X number of machines be turned on for the number of.
I understand all that. Don't talk about the people.
Yeah, poll workers, same thing. You need a certain amount of poll workers to cover those shifts.
As it was, we, because they were, the whole county was in one room, we only put two per table. But those two people had a third of the county to take care of. So, you know, and then two people were at the front desk, looking them up and telling them which table to go to for their district. Um, we really can't go any lower than that because it, especially for next year, with being the presidential, we're gonna have a lot of people, you know, coming through there. Um, we had, we had lines at times on this, and it's just, by rights, we should have had more, but because they were all together, we could share. So.
The people that had to work Saturday and Sunday from.
Our office?
Their offices, were they on overtime?
Yes, they were.
Is there anything that says we can't stagger the junior most or senior most? I would offer it to the senior most first. And have that individual work from like, say, Wednesday through Friday for that week?
Oh, we could do that, yes.
I, I would do that because that's cost effective.
Right, right. We could do that. Now, we, we, as it looked at, we didn't have anybody come in for absences except one person through that whole period. And that was basically what they were there is for absences, if some, you know, because we were open for that too. Which is required that we have two late nights for absences. So we combined them in with this time.
We just had two people. We were there every day, but we're on salary, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had one person from each side.
We could have them come in later and work overtime, and then it wouldn't cut into it.
I mean, the government wants this, but he's not helping us with this for eternity.
We understand that.
You know, let's, let's use our heads on some different things, and if it's not in the contract, you can put it in the contract.
The biggest thing is because it was the first time. We really didn't know what to expect. So we were over-prepared because we didn't know what might happen. It won't, we won't, we saw how it worked out, and probably we won't need as much next time. We'll go there, I guess.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, the commissioner started right out with an explanation, so I guess we just went into that. I have a question on it before we approve it, though. The revenue of eighty-one thousand in state aid have you requested, and then the administrator didn't put that in, so where's that, uh? What's the discrepancy there, I guess? Do you think they're not gonna get it, or do they think they're gonna get it?
There's not line in the budget yet. I think the Treasury Department has to put that in.
They got approved last month, I believe, in March, so we'll roll over next year.
Well, if you need a motion for this on the record, second.
Get into first or second.
I have your question.
Yeah, I got another question. Um, can we just refresh the committee guys on, uh, you guys just renewed your lease for the building, right? Was that this past year? Was there increased costs with that?
No.
No, okay, and they utilize, did you guys get more space through this?
We got the room that for early voting, yes, without any cost.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have this formal motion, but for the, the same discussion, I mean, I, I harped on this, uh, since I've served on the committee. For me, it's, it's, uh, we, we, the lease is through Operation Oswego County, correct? They, they own the building. It's, you know, it's, it seems a little backwards to me that we allocate hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to Operation Oswego County every year, and on the back end, they turn around and charge us for offices. It's very generous of them to donate that extra room, but, uh, you know, for me, they've had a good partner in the county the past two years. About every study that's come before us, we've, uh, we've seemed to want to split with them. It just seems completely backwards to me that we continue to, uh, to pay them for the form housing or whatever. So just wanted to put that on the record.
And I also wanna just make a point here before we move on with, um, this one and any of the other ones. Um, outside of the two small things we, uh, budget items we just approved, I, I appreciate all the work that, um, departments have done in putting together their, um, budget proposals and obviously fill that. I have to say, I got this Friday. This is the biggest thing we do. Spent some time on the weekend, but honestly, to be prepared on Monday to vote yes or no on any of these budgets is, um, I, I, I think. I'm, I actually am just a little frustrated at the timing of, of this, and I don't know if other people had more time than I had, but, um, I am not prepared to vote. So I will, I will be voting no on all of these, but that's not to say that I don't completely appreciate all the work that's on this Friday.
Right. I have a few questions. Looking at our salaries and wages. Temporary and part-time, is that the poll workers?
No.
On, uh, page thirty-eight, uh.
No, temporary and part-time are, um, the people that work in the office.
Where is the poll worker?
They're under elections. They're in the elections, um, fifty-four, fifty-five, yeah. They're all rolled into that.
Page thirty-nine, right. Under, uh, it's in a project, uh, election. Third line down.
Yes, third line down, five, four, five, five, zero, zero, E L E C. Two sixty-four, two hundred and six, four thousand.
Is that, uh, what is that rate giving the, uh, poll people working the polls? What is, what is the salary gonna be for paid personnel?
That's with a, uh, increase to, uh, two hundred.
Put it in for two hundred for the inspectors.
That's what we discussed two months ago in this committee.
Right, we're hoping for at least a hundred and eighty.
I have, I have, uh, a comparison of all the other counties, if anybody'd like to see it.
It still comes out for twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. And I, I'm sorry, I, myself, like I, I mentioned two months ago in the meeting, I would rather see it be, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars a day because those people are there from six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night, and so, and I, I would approve something like that. Sorry, but, uh, now, on the page thirty-eight, what, uh, the jobs that are listing under salaries, salaries and wages, which ones are our union contract?
None of our people are union.
Alright, so it's all salaries and raises for us to give them, so it's not anything under contract?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, technically, they're not under contract, however, the two commissioners are, their salary is regulated under a local law, which has to, which is established that builds in their increase every, for four or five years, something like that it was.
We did ask for an increase for our, the election clerks.
But I'm saying, your, your two is, is regulated by a local law.
Right.
So there is something that says that you guys have to.
I just wanna make a comment, not, not on the committee, but I did tour the facility for the early voting. Uh, they've done a great job, the way it's designed and the way they did it. So I think for the first time around, there's issues that we have, maybe do not know at this point, but they certainly set up a nice unit, and it worked very well. So when I was down there, just wanna bring that comment.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Any other questions? We have a first and second. Everybody in, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? One of both. Next up will be, um, fourth and the eleventh.
Uh, sort of mind, you have just a few nominal changes pertaining to small line items, um, on those price repairs, short, small increases, uh, uniformed clothing increases. Weights and leather fees, you can increase to balance out what we averaged last few years. So small changes, um, balances out with that. The only larger item that we're looking at, um, is under other equipment, uh, for weights and measures. Uh, we have a need for a hundred gallon prover. Current one we have is approximately thirty to forty years old. We don't even have an exact, uh, when that was purchased. Tried to rehab it a few years ago, um, but it was not galvanized, so it's continued to, uh, to rust out to the point that the state will not accept certifications on it. Um, so we're in the need of that, uh, as we, as several other counties are as well. Director of, uh, weights and motors is here to answer any questions pertaining to it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move the, move that department.
Okay.
Second.
First and second. Any other discussion?
This, um, prover, I just want everybody to know, it's been something we've talked about for a long time, and the same idea that we knew it was coming. I'm thankful that Jamie was able to kind of live by without it for as long as he can. But now we are at that point where, you know, this is, uh, one of the few, uh, consumer protections that we have, we offer in the county. Uh, I think it's our obligation to provide this, the right equipment.
Yes, just a quick question for the county administrator, maybe, uh, because of the lifespan of this prover, was this available for OTAS funds at all, or?
No. There you have it.
Go on.
All right. We have a first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? One of both? Carries. Okay, uh. Next up is the county attorney.
Hello, our budget is well, uh, the insubstantial increases, um, as you all know, the.
Page thirty-four.
The majority of what we do is not always within our control, depending on who chooses the county and, and, right? So, um, you don't always know exactly what, what we're looking at for the coming year. We do know, there was obviously the tax agreement finalized with, uh, Christopher, but we may be starting, um, negotiations on agreements for nine mile one and two. So depending on how that goes, we might end up, um, needing to change for updated appraisal of the plan. Um, the other significant change that you're all aware of, particularly there were presentations on it, was raise the age, um, for our office for prosecuting, um, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. So we're responsible for that. And obviously, work for some of the county departments, um, like labor arbitration and things like that, um, we've had a slight increase in that. But overall, um, we're lower on legal fees, um, than we've been in a quite a while. And on the insurance side of it, um, between premiums and deductibles, we had a slight need to raise that. We're not able until ninety days prior to renewal to get an accurate picture of what exactly those are gonna be, so we don't know. But our best estimates are right along, um, what we have in the, in the budget, so that's a slight increase, but not overall very much.
Okay.
I'll move the self-care answers, okay? We have a first?
I'll say it. Just a comment.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Sure.
On this raise the age, it's very depressing that, um, I guess it shouldn't be a surprise, but all the meetings that we went to, raise the age costs were all supposed to be covered by the state, um, right across the board. We're kind of led to believe that even these costs, and anybody who, uh, may not be aware of it, our county attorney's office, the family court attorney that sits in that office, is very instrumental in this rage the age proceedings. Uh, it's very disappointing that, once again, the state's come up and said, no, we're not going to give you the hundred and, what is it, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to reimburse them. I'm just baffled that they lead us on for well over a year, and then all of a sudden going where they are again. So another unfunded mandate handed down from Albany.
Any other discussion? Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Close? One of both. Next up is county court.
Page twenty-nine.
Morning, everybody. It's fairly straightforward. Uh, the increases that you'll see are in motor vehicle. Uh, they pretty much speak to the doubling size of Oswego office. Um, everything else is contractual increases and other things we discussed throughout the year. Can I answer any questions that you have?
Moving for discussion?
Second.
Second. Yeah, sec, oh, yeah, I just. Are we open for discussion? We're all looking at you. Can you, can you talk about, like, just with the new more vehicle clerks? Um, you know, we've talked for years and years and years about being more, uh, aggressive when it comes to dealers and so on and so forth. Can you talk about, um, if any of that work's gonna be allocated to these new vehicle clerks, or just give us the synopsis on kind of where these guys are gonna be?
Yep, absolutely. So the, uh, the office in Oswego has been built to deal with two major problems. One, real ID. Real ID is what is increasing your lines. Let's say a client that talked about this at length. Um, it, it's, it's a significant burden on my office. It takes two clerks now to process one real ID transaction. You come in the office, you want a real ID compliant license, takes like two of those clerks, takes twice as long to process. That's why lines are as long as they are. We built Oswego office so that we have an information window at the front, so that you come in, we've all heard the horror stories of people come in, say they want a real ID transaction, they don't have the right paperwork. Maybe you're a female, and your, your name was changed at some point in time, maybe you had a divorce somewhere in there. If you don't have all the paperwork, the trace, all of those name changes back, you get in line, you might wait in line for an hour and a half. Get up to the window, oh my God, I don't have all the right paperwork, and you gotta go right back out. So that information window's gonna take care of that right at the very beginning, so you never actually have to wait in line, but obviously, I need to have that staff. I don't have the current staff order to do that right now. So that'll be the front window there, then hopefully that'll take care of some of the real ID transaction windows. Um, with this allocation, we'll be able to open all of the windows in the new office. And then, uh, Tommy mentioned the dealer component. Every state, every office in the entire state, including the state-run offices, are all way behind on dealers simply because of the real ID challenges we're all facing. We're all in front of our legislatures right now, asking for more people, asking for more staff. The state is actually probably gonna hire some more people as well. Um, so we're all competing in that same mode to try to cut down on line time, but all of that then hurts us on the dealer side. Which is at the end of the day where I make the majority of the money that comes back and returns to you every single year. Um, so we have built in the office the ability to bring all of the dealer work that we do from the county into the Oswego office. Um, my anticipation is we'll take two of the employees that approved here, and they will be foc- focused purely on keeping up all the other offices on dealer work. This is as conservative as I could possibly give you. If I was being honest, I probably would put up another three employees, but I think four for right now will make it, um, able to run the office as design. Um, I was appreciative of the two employees you already gave me, I think, in August, so I think this'll get me up and running.
And we're, oh, I'm sorry, and we're hoping, so that information window, we're hoping is just gonna be able to streamline the lines so you can put some clerks.
Make it, make it much more so, because if, if, if we can take those people that don't know if they have the right paperwork out of that line, it'll make those lines go much, much quicker. Because the balance is between customer service and also revenue development, right? So if I can improve the customer service experience, that'll help me drive the revenue side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll pass for you.
Uh, my question is just on the salaries. I know you've had a problem in the past, training, and then they go someplace else. Are we getting there or not?
I've asked for grade increases for a long time. Um, motor vehicle clerks are grade below index clerks. So my index clerks that are downstairs are grade higher than motor vehicle clerks. Um, I would love to see that evened out, however, it just hasn't been done. We lose, we lose, we lose motor vehicle clerks, especially to New York State. Often, they go for a dollar more an hour and a forty-hour work week. We pay thirty-five hours. I would love to see that increase, but.
I would too.
I got a priority right now. And right now, right now, I need physical people in the offices. That's the priority. I need people to back up those lines. Um, I need people on the windows.
If you have physical people that you're training, and then you move them in the end, we're, we're gonna spend more money in the long run.
I agree.
Thank you for coming in, Michael.
My pleasure.
It's always, I always admire people who want to be a dartboard.
I've seen you today.
Uh, there's a couple things I want to discuss in just a moment, because I've had a lot of experiences with motor vehicle clerks dealing with the state.
Yep.
Just being a earner there of this juncture. That, the motor vehicle department, for mostly, maybe you realize it, maybe you don't. I've had to spend enough time during the last four or five months, you get to see it firsthand. And when you're in that line for an hour and a half, it, it is very frustrating, number one. The people see that and they complain, and I've been in the Oswego office more than I have in the Fulton recently, because my tax dollars are in there.
Absolutely.
And it's a beautiful building, and I got people waiting an hour and a half, and you ought to hear the comments that these people have. They are pissed because they see it, and they wanna see something happen. And Mike, I'm gonna say, I gotta see something happen.
Yep.
I don't care how we do it, whatever it takes. Now, you have a few retiring minutes coming, I believe, this year. We can't wait for, uh, on that particular issue, I strongly urge that we get those people replaced, not wait two or three months. And I'm sure somebody's gonna be out sick, I'm sure somebody's gonna stub their toe on a bio cabinet and go and comp for six months. I, it, it is what it is. Employees are employees. So, I mean, that's what I'm looking for, but we've gotta have that experience to be positive for these people.
I, I, I can, I appreciate the comments, and one of the things you put in here is, we do have a management position in the four new positions that we've asked for. One of those is to directly back up one of our senior motor, or sorry, one of our, yeah, one of our senior motor vehicle clerks, uh, who will be retiring beginning of next year. So we're kind of creating at least a little bit of a succession plan, um, and then we'll be asking obviously to backfill that other position. Because it is, it is a challenge. We have had an awful lot of very experienced clerks that've worked in motor vehicle for a very, very long time and done very, very well with it. But it's a challenge now to get people in and get people on a list. Uh, right now, I have six hires in my office that have been with the county less than four months, uh, in motor vehicle, and they're all pending the test. So if they don't score and qualify by civil service appropriately, all six of them are gonna be gone, and I got something all over again. Um, it takes a minimum of six months in order to train a motor vehicle clerk. So we're trying to get ahead of all those curbs as much as we possibly can.
I've got one more thing for you, Michael, and some of these people aren't gonna wanna hear, you know, that's why you're here. Those people, now, I don't know how many of you have worked with clerical people. UPS, we had a lot of them. Those people right there are so underpaid, it's sick because of the stress they're there. Those people right there are so underpaid, it's sick because of the stress they're there all day long. You've got an hour and a half line, and it takes, when I went to, when I finally get to stop at Fulton with one thing that I thought would be easy, here I'm here at eight fifteen in the morning, I was the first one there, by the time I got in the door, it was nineteen people waiting to come in there. Those people had enough work keeping busy to lunch.
Yep.
I mean, that's a fact. And, and we're paying them, what, fourteen, twenty-eight start wage?
Yeah.
Jesus Christ, I went to McDonald's and sit there and foot burgers for that. I mean, it's, it's completely idiotic, because if, I, I, unfortunately, I have had time to walk through this building, I'm to it at least twice a month. There's no job that's more stressful than that one is. I don't care how you cut it, if any of you wanna walk with me, we'll go, and we'll go see it, but there's nothing more stressful than that job right there, because the person's constantly there with the people, and unfortunately, it's the public, and the public is not really nice sometimes.
And I, I will say that it's the office environment in Oswego, morale has been significantly improved simply because of the new design of the office. The employees like it a lot. Um, they have a break room that is great, they can go down and utilize, they've got some picnic tables, they can go outside, um, because that side of the office, in order to keep, try to keep employees, is important. Um, so, you know, well, I understand the financial challenges sometimes of allocating more resources. Um, I am appreciative of legislature's investment in motor vehicle because that office is better. Um, a lot of people like that office. If you've been in it yet, there's some aesthetics that are built in, so you can see some trees, you have some natural light. Um, those are all things that work towards a better office environment that, uh, especially, you know, the office in Fulton is a challenge. It's an older designed office. Um, it's very, very difficult to really change the way that line is, is put in there. We've looked at doing, you know, queues and all that stuff. It, it really just doesn't work in that space. So, the Oswego office is built well. Um, I think there's some other employees that might wanna transfer there at some point. We'll put it with that as we go. Um, but, uh, it's working well. And I also don't wanna forget about Palasguy. Palasguy is the, um, least expensive office for me to run, or is the most profitable. Um, so, that Palasguy office, they churn out work like nobody, it's unbelievable the work they do. They now taking work from, uh, St. Lawrence, gotta get work from St. Lawrence County now that comes down into their office, because they're better, they return stuff much more quickly, and they work very, very hard, so. I'm very proud of the staff that I have, I really am, and I just, it's, we're in a revenue, we're in a place where we really need to have that balance between customer service and revenue projections, and, uh, I'm very confident that if we focus on the dealers' comments and the earlier, uh, we'll only see that grow. Thank you.
Um, with all due respect, Richard, I understand the, the emotion and the passion, but I would ask that we don't use the words in, in open here. Few things here. One, uh, I didn't mention it earlier, but, uh, with what legislator Del Conti said about getting this at a certain time and then having to go over it by, by Monday morning, did put a little, you know, pressure on being able to vote in favor of anything or against it. I'm not in, not on this committee, so I don't get to vote no or yes on anything in here, and I know a lot of you are happy for that. But, uh, the point is, is I did look enough of it over, okay, to make the statement that I will not be voting in favor as the budget stands on any of these budgets, okay? And I sent everybody an email stating that. But, in, on this, on the clerk's budget here, uh, and I understand legislator Klein's point on people waiting in line, but people have been waiting in lines in DMVs for years, it hasn't been just because of the real licenses, okay? That's the way it's been for years. And I personally don't think that three people are going to make a difference in that when you have people going to lunch and you have two people working and four windows and twenty-five people in line, is going to answer the case that now all of a sudden we're gonna put eight people in a building and, uh, you're gonna have four of them off on lunch at one time. But, but those are the schematics that, you know, that they have to work out themselves. But, I'm just saying that I don't feel that the three people that we're looking to add is going to change the length of time in the line, okay? And people, we have to get a better handle on how to handle it, that's throughout this whole state, not just here in Oswego County. And this is nothing personal, this is just strictly that by the numbers and what I'm looking at as far as this budget goes, okay? This budget is an excellent budget if you just look at it from the top, but if you look at the rest of it, then you have to say, well, why didn't we do something different? And that's all I'm asking, is do we have to do something different on it? It's, it's a budget that calls for no tax increase, it calls for a budget for something that, uh, the minority caucus, and I know that the majority caucus has been working on for years, all together to try to eliminate the use of the fund balance, and that's been done, but yet we have some revenue coming in, and we have some savings coming in, and we're not passing it on to the taxpayers. What we're doing, and we're giving raises, and that's not what we're supposed to do, okay? We are supposed to give, pass it on to the taxpayers. It's nothing personal, and I'm just looking to do that, and I'm sorry, but, you know, I just, I can't, you know, we knew when we started building the Oswego DMV. First, it was supposed to be enlarged for space for records.
The what? The what? Increased by thirty percent?
Increased by thirty percent.
Right, and now, now we've, we've increased the DMV, which was planned, okay? Which is in plan. Now, we've got a office in Fulton that maybe that should've been enlarged, because the lines in Fulton are larger than the lines in Oswego.
That's true.
Well, I've, I've been in Fulton and I know, like you said, Dick, you know, well, uh, I'll.
I can show you the.
I'd have to go to a Oswego, I'd have to, I said, we don't, right now, we don't even, but I'll, I'll go to a Oswego.
I can show you the statistic.
I'll, I'll, I'll go to a Oswego, but I know that in Fulton, just like Dick said, at age fifteen, you'd have to be in line.
Correct.
Okay, to be within the first five. This morning, when I passed the DMV in Oswego, there were four people up there five minutes before opening, okay? And in Fulton, there's fifteen or twenty already.
That's true.
Okay, so, that's, that's all I'm saying, is what I've seen there and what I know from the people that work there, that that's, that's what happens. And, yes, we, as a government, have to im- improve our service to the public, and I just don't think the three people are gonna do it, but that's just my, my point. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, it's like, it's a quick statement, please, if I could, I'm mandated by state law to offer a lunch hour. We stagger that as best as we possibly can based upon the operations of the office and staff that I have. Um, there are times when we have people out on sick leave or out on comp or something else that requires us to go down, um, to one or two windows being able to be open. Um, this time, as mentioned, the dealer work is also something that piles up in the back side of the office. Um, we try to prioritize the most amount of clerks we possibly can for the line, but at the end of the day, if we don't process those dealer transactions of speeded timeline, they go someplace else, and then I'm gonna give you all that from a revenue perspective. So, we try our best we can to prioritize all that. Um, the employees that we've asked for in our budget will definitely help all of both sides.
Sure.
This is my, uh, I, I'd like to clear up a few things. This is my ninth budget, tenth year here. Prior to being a legislator, I actually worked in the county clerk's office, so I do have a little bit of experience with the office and its functions and everything. Legislative custody, just to counter one of the things you said about nobody ever, or everybody having to wait in line for years and this and that, quite honestly, that wasn't always like that.
Correct.
Until this real ID came around, that's when the wait time really increased. It like, yeah, you'd have a wait time fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe, that's nothing for a DMV. Go to the St. DMV facilities, you'll tell, it's like three, four hours, but for Oswego County to be up to the hour and a half wait, that is unheard of in the history of this county. And I wanna thank the county clerk for bringing forward a plan. Now, I've had a number of constituents ask me about the new facility, and they said, you know, we work on a budget and that's how the county operates, you know? We have a spending plan, and, uh, please give us some time. The, um, facility is complete, we're working on the budget, we're gonna get those positions in there. Like I said, you say, get a, get rid of the three positions for there, I don't know what that's going to accomplish other than keep the wait time where it is, and, and we're, we're not gonna make any headway whatsoever and even try. Uh, it's not like you're throwing money after, good money after bad money here, it's a great investment for us, actually, because we have revenue stream that can come in. So, um, I don't understand, and I know you referenced it in your email this morning as well, doing away with those three positions, I think that the clerk has come through with a very conservative plan to help alleviate the wait time in that office. And one final thing that I would like to address is, I don't know about every other legislator in here, but we closed out last year's budget at the beginning of December, or formulated the current budget at the beginning of December. Um, I don't know about all the rest of it, but I started working on this year's, the budget we're working on right now, then, especially as a department, um, chair, working with my departments to figure out where we're gonna be and where we've been in the last two and a half months, I've been knee-deep in budget. So, anybody who says they don't know anything about the budget, well, that's your own problem and shame on you for not being active with your department heads in the county administrator moving forward.
I hope you do, Richard, personally.
No, that, that, you, you said it yourself, like I said, Del Conti, our number one job is the budget.
Yeah.
We work on your budget all year long.
If I could, if I could, Chairman, the, the point to removing the employees, it would be impossible for me to manage this Oswego office without the staff included in this legislation. You, we would have to close one of your offices. It's that simple. I, I shared that with the county administrator, I shared that with the chairman, the director. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not structurally able, I, we talk about morale from a staff perspective, my staff right now is frustrated. They need people, they need, they need to be backed up, and they'll take a day off. Right now, they don't, right now, I have a lot of employees that are canceling vacation and time off, putting off appointments simply because they care about their coworkers, they don't wanna leave them alone, and they, we need, I need this backup.
Just, uh, a quick comment, I know we have to address some problems in Oswego, we've identified a bunch of those, got the, you know, there may be some issues down in Fulton as well, but three and four are positive, up on the other end of the county. You know, like our county clerk just mentioned, up in Palasguy, in May, Oswego, I've been dealing in there for several years, I got my high school kids that go in and out of there. You know, so, take a trip up the north end of the county rather than waiting in line because.
Stop the next day, you know, print some money.
That's, that's happy with all. So, just wanna reinforce the positive.
I was very shy to Mexico for lunch, right?
Right.
Very much appreciate that, Nick. Very nice.
Right. Good. This, I, I wasn't gonna say anything more, but, sorry, there were, there was points, two points, one, uh, uh, county clerk back, as Dick mentioned about the, uh, the revenue, and, uh, just my pet peeve is, is that, you know, your profit margin is gonna, is dwindling, again, it's getting a little bit smaller, it's not getting down, you're still making money, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm not appreciative of the money you're making, I'm not appreciative of what you're doing as far as the, the, you know, car dealerships and stuff like that, that is not what I'm saying, okay? But, that point is another one, but we go back here, we're here, and the budget, we, yeah, we, we all pay attention to the budget for, you know, from the time we put it in to the time it comes up here, but we don't know what the actual budget's going to be for the next year until a day before we're supposed to come here and meet, and I'm sorry, you know, I take offense to the fact that we, we weren't paying attention. Yes, we have been paying attention, and we have been making suggestions throughout the whole year, okay? And we have been following what's going on, and have we agreed with it? Not all the time, and when we don't, we say that we don't agree with it, and I'm sorry, but then all of a sudden to get a budget that is, it, 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 it passed on to us on email, then, then we get a hard copy, and then we come in, we're supposed to talk about it, and we're supposed to make suggestions as to what's supposed to happen with, it can't happen, okay? I know it can happen if I just say, okay, whatever you say, but that isn't me, and that isn't a few people that are, you know, in my caucus. Now, it's, let's go back to the clerk, okay, and the motor vehicle. The real license has been in effect since what?
We've had three years to implement a six-year plan.
Okay.
New York State waited, New York State waited three years within the six-year federal required timeline, so I'm putting six years of license renewals into three years, that's why your lines are as long as they have.
When did that three, when did that three years start and when does it end?
It ends October first, twenty twenty. October first, twenty twenty, if you don't have, no, that's not, Frank, I know what your point you're trying to make, and it's not the correct point. October first, twenty twenty is the deadline in order to have a real ID complaint license order to fly domestically or internet, or internationally, we get the best for internationally. If, after that, you still are, we're still gonna be processing real ID complaint license, because everyone's gonna panic. People right now, that's part of the reason why you see the lines that are, are increased right now, is people know that deadline. We have marketing that's going out right now directly from our tourism, our tourism department to make sure we continue to promote that, because at the end of the day, we have to have as many people as humanly possible compliant by October first, twenty twenty. It's not my fault that New York State has to wait three years in order to do this. The other side of that component is, uh, after October first, twenty twenty, you mean a lot of people that get caught in that mix, you mean a lot of people that didn't, don't get their passports or don't get their real ID signed. So, those people are gonna come into our offices. I don't anticipate this being anything done by October first, twenty twenty, not in the slightest.
Okay.
There's no need to be in the state of New York to think that's the planning we're at.
But, now, the, the point is, we're in the twenty-first century. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, we had, we should've known by the computer, because it's this wonderful thing that we have, knowing how many people in Oswego County required the real ID, and their, their renewals were going to go along with, because as soon as I, my license is, you know, renewed, that's when I get my real ID, okay? So, how many were there at that point in time and how many do we have left is what New York State and should be passing down to Oswego County if Oswego County doesn't have the means to be able to find that out, so that we know that, what, what I'm getting at is we're adding three people, okay? We've added, with the other two that we added last year, that's five people, and we're adding those five people, it's going to cost us be, well beyond the point where we're gonna have all these people coming in, and if you look around the whole world, everybody is going away from people that, you know, people, cashiers.
Real ID has to be done online, it has to be done in an office, you cannot do it online by New York State law.
Right, but I'm saying is how many, do we need, how many are there left out that they have to do?
Last I, last I, last I checked, I think it was a month and a half ago, we got from New York State that less than thirty percent of Oswego County eligible drivers have a real ID license.
Okay.
Less than thirty percent.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Okay. But those people's licenses.
I make these suggestions lightly, right?
Right, and I'm not saying you do.
You know that.
Right, and, and this is not anything other than I'm looking at what I'm trying to save for the taxpayers, and what are we gonna do?
And I'm trying to drive revenue to the taxpayers, that's why also on the dealer side of things, I continue to increase that every year I've been working. And that, if I don't keep up on those things, that's where we're really losing revenue.
And I appreciate that, and everybody in Oswego County appreciates.
Thank you.
Okay? There, there's no doubt in my mind that you're not doing that.
Thank you.
But, what I am looking at is what are we going to do when everybody has a real license and we don't have, we have people standing around looking at each other and all of a sudden you gotta lay people off? I won't be here then, okay? I know that I won't.
I'm very confident that we'll have reasons for that.
Okay, so, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna walk up to a guy and say, well, okay, I gotta lay you off now because I can plan for the future? Sorry, that's my only opinion.
They'll be running dealer transactions, and hopefully I can increase our dealer transaction work. They'll be running dealer transactions and hopefully I can increase our dealer transaction rate, that's where revenue can come in.
Okay, thank you, I'm done now, very loud, others got points.
Well, I do, I do agree with Frank about the the budget comment that Mr. Will made, very, I think inappropriately. Um however, I'm gonna agree with um legislator, client, army's position and and the salary, I feel like we made a decision to invest in this facility. We need to make the right choice, these are, these are not large incomes, and I feel like if we need to come up a dollar an hour or whatever it takes to keep our people here. The the reason people like going to Glass Guy is because she's, I guess she's been there forever, right?
The employees of.
You know, she stayed there, we need people to come, be trained and stay.
Uh we, I I, a Swiggo, Glass Guy's a unique office in the sense that they, I don't know how to best way to put this, the the they're, again, it's the, it's the cheapest office for me to run from a financial perspective, but it's the most profitable.
But you don't have turnover there, is what I'm saying.
Oh, we have turnover there too, no, yeah, our senior just left.
You do, we gotta sell the turnover, is what I'm saying, because it's counterproductive and in the end, it's gonna, you're gonna spend a lot more money. And honestly, as a taxpayer, I would pay to get my two hours back.
I agree with that, that I agree with a hundred percent, thank you.
Yeah, Frank, just, just, so you you're right, the way today's technology is, we should be able to do more things online and just put it to bed and pick it up in the mail. Like the real ID, and I went through this, and I also heard these same comments online, people weren't aware. And maybe we're not doing a good enough job getting the word out, but they weren't aware they couldn't do it online. And then they get up in the line, they have no clue what they need, I had no clue. I mean, I had to run down to Syracuse to get a first certificate, for God's sake, I mean, this is all the stuff you need, it's it's crazy.
And we put out a couple of different editorials to try to get people understanding that real ID's out there, State D M B's gonna, they need to push the PR thing, so. We're doing the best we possibly can, but that's also gonna increase the line, so it's the challenge on both sides.
Yeah, all you have to do is call in ahead of time, ask them what you need, if you got there.
You can, yeah, the best, best way to go is online, the best way you can go is go to New York State, uh get your documents and and they have a a great thing on the State D M B's website. You can print out a checklist, it's a great way to go and kind of, kind of exact the documents you need before coming in for a real ID.
Yeah, just quickly, hopefully, uh first point, um let's not, let's not kid ourselves, there's absolutely things that we can do to make the budget process more inclusive. There's, there's without a doubt from both sides, ways that the budget process can be more inclusive, City of Swiggo has public budget discussions, there's absolutely ways to make that process more inclusive. So let's, let's live the reality on that point. My second question, we talked about um this outside of committee, uh at one point, what, what, is there criteria that this, that we have to meet? Um or is it strictly come down to a, to a staffing and payroll issue to allow, because I don't think we're doing this right now, correct me if I'm wrong. To allow the public to utilize a forum to book an appointment to come to me.
Yeah, we don't have that functionality right now, um we don't have the technology, first of all.
So that's the barriers.
Yeah, we have to put that in and and it's, it's fifty fifty on whether or not it works well, um the state office on Taff Road has it. Not a lot of people like it, um sometimes you can say you make a nine AM appointment, great, good for you, but then that person that made nine thirty, they actually get in to see somebody at eleven forty-five. It it's a real challenge to make that work, um I would entertain it, I'm just not confident that I would recommend it.
I'm just, I I just, you know, I spitball ideas, if there's, if there was an opportunity to utilize an online forum for, for peop, for taxpayers that we know. Um can be done at a certain time, sure, we need to know like real ID and things like that, that's obviously not gonna be the one, but there were, whether it's um, you know, license renewal, whatever.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of, is that some people, because of the frustration that they have, they don't do their renewals, regular renewals, if you're not getting a real ID or anything like that, they mail them in. I mean, that's one of the concerns that I do have, because we have told everybody, come into your offices, drive, drive revenue to your offices. Um, you know, we're gonna put some drop boxes out, so people can drop off the paperwork if they need to. You know, we're trying to keep as much revenue as we possibly can in the county, um but I know I'm fighting a uphill battle in some regards there, especially with real ID.
Nate? Yeah, I guess my only comment is, is that as a legislature, you know, we're going to um approve the construction of such a great facility. And we're gonna ask the county clerk to do more and more in terms of bringing in revenue. But then we're gonna turn around and make a suggestion that, well, let's not staff it. I mean, what the hell is the point then? I mean, honestly, build a facility, it needs staff to run effectively, the county clerk has come here and said, this is the bare bone of what I can do to make this thing run. I agree with legislators on county, we probably need fair people a lot better too, but this is where we're at. If we're gonna sit around and debate now, wow, jeez, let's not staff it and uh and make even more of a headache, I think that makes this a little bit bigger for. Uh than actually bringing the staffing forward and putting it on the county clerk to say, we're giving you what you asked for, now show us the results.
Thank you.
I'm gonna point you on the committee clerk. But the, but the, the wages for the clerks, I I agree with everybody in here, just about everybody in here that said anything about the wages. That I feel that they should get paid higher, it's, it's not an easy job. But uh they get enough, they get good benefits and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna give out, and I said it to the hourly leads themselves. If I'm gonna give you more money, you're gonna pay more for your benefits, that's all I'm asking you to remember that, I agree with it, okay, so. But now, to go to the point of, I thought in the, when you get your license renewal in the mail, doesn't this, aren't there instructions in there as to what to do and if you want a real ID and what?
There are.
But that's it.
How did you not know that to me that you're?
Because I renewed my license three years in advance, because Frank, I fly twelve times, fourteen times a year, I can't be waiting till the last minute.
You didn't wait till you got it, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I do mine every six years.
But that's a good point though, too, because not everybody's getting everything in the mail anymore from State D M B. Because your registrations, you're lucky if you get a registration where you don't want the mail, right? Because a lot of them are getting, and there's a lot of people who their registrations are coming in due and they're like, oh man, that's expired, how did, I didn't get anything in the mail, and you're not getting that.
Okay. We have a first and a second.
I heard it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Let's see.
Yeah, the only increase you'll see in this from previous years are annual increase for salary and fringe, um our N I S A, NICO membership. Um and then the only real change to this is just a small increase for other travel compensated for an increased participation in N I S A conferences.
There's a motion to move it. Second, first and second.
Good job. Quick, quick, um no, I mean, I I've talked to the county administrator about this, I I'm, you know, I'm thrilled to see that we're at a point to where we're not utilizing fund balance out of this budget. I think the budget potentially yields some potential if we're smart with where we cut, um to possibly give um a break in taxes, um that might be a pipe dream, but not for me. Um so for for my sake, um I'm gonna move to eliminate legislative raises um for this year, line five, one, one, zero, 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 page six. Um back to the twenty nineteen adopted rates.
So you wanna amend that or you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to eliminate the raises, thirty percent increase.
We have a motion to allow this such a rating. All of them favor of not exception.
Any other discussion on it?
Any other discussion on this? Any other discussion? We had a first and a second.
Monday morning, come now, they'll get it.
We had a first and a second, but to move it, that's a plus.
But then they made a motion to amend.
Make the motion to.
I'm making a motion to.
Discussing on the amendments.
Alright.
I don't have any discussion.
No, I I appreciate what you're saying, Tom, right now, we're having a difficult time, number one, to be able to recruit younger people. Now, I mean, we're not paying them twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year like we are in the kind of, even though it's a different county, but they have more layers of government also, keep that in mind. Um the the thing is this, if you, you haven't been here too long, but the amount of responsibility, the amount of meetings that we're required to go to now is increased, I get it, it's part of the job. I don't have a big problem with that because I am fortunately retired, you're paying me, when you think you are or not, you are, so I appreciate that. But the thing is this, if we, we gave up last year, we've given up the year, year before that or year before that, I can't remember which. Um this is not a lot of money, you're talking ten thousand dollars in the total budget of two hundred and eight million or whatever it is, Phil. The percent of increase is so tiny, it's irrelevant. It's completely irrelevant, I don't wanna sit there and say, somebody can, and and this is not, I'm not saying you're doing this, please don't understand, misunderstand us. But to say we're eliminate this and trying to look good about it, you're not looking good, you're looking stupid.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, and and it's not, Tom, you gotta understand, this is not personal.
Yeah, I I mean, no, and I and I don't, I don't take it personal, I mean, um I don't even know where to start. Uh first thing I would say, um as far as recruitment goes, uh cut the body in half and pay people more, that'll help with recruitment real quick. Second thing I would say, um for me, I'm looking at a balanced budget right now, right, no utilization of fund balance. Every elected's um goal, in my opinion, should be to strive to lower taxes for my constituents. So if I'm gonna go through this budget and I'm gonna be looking at folks' salaries or looking to cut, um whether it's salary, whether it's somebody's budget, so on and so forth. Well, with respect, it's, it's our job to lead by example, so as I go through the budget, why is it fair for me, as small as it is, it's a principle then, when it, when it comes down to it. Why is it fair for me to say, well, I'm gonna take my three percent raise, but if my goal is to lower taxes for you and I'm going into your department budget, I might be looking at a department head's salary that I don't want to increase to work to lower taxes? Well, then I'm, frankly, that's stupid, right? I mean, that, 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 that's not principle, I'm not gonna take a raise when I'm gonna go through and look to possibly cut salaries in other people's budgets. So I think, I think we just have a disagreement on that, it, it, the, the amount of money and how miniscule it is, not about looking good, it's not about trying to, trying to play politics here. It's about if I'm gonna go in and if I'm gonna cut, I should start with the people, I should stop at this test, right? And so that's, that's where I come from at it.
Um and just along the lines of re, of recruitment, I mean, as long as we have daytime meetings and and those uh sorts of things that are prohibitive to young people who have full-time jobs. So I don't think uh small raises in our salary is gonna make us, uh make the job more um attractive to young people. In addition to, of course, the the political framework of of things as they exist. And I agree with Tom that it's very disingenuous to give yourself a raise because you are actually putting it in the budget and voting on it, so you're voting for your own raise, but then you're gonna go and 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 squirm. And um find other places to cut off other people's income, so it's a principle thing.
And and I respect both of what you're saying, but if I go through this budget and I have, regardless of when I received it, it rained like heck the other day and I was able to get through it all. I also look at the fact, ours are so miscible, now also look at the department heads like this, and some of our department heads are paid pretty well. And when you're increasing the department head by four or five thousand dollars, and we're looking at a couple hundred bucks. Maybe I, I may, I still can add subtract without a, a calculator or a computer, and I know my multiplication table real well, it doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't, I mean, if there's gonna be a sacrifice, then everybody has to sacrifice, that's why I leave. Just like I've heard a person say he's pro-union, I'm pro that also, everybody is sacrificed.
I, for me, it, uh again, still, it's not personal, you know, any of this, okay, any budget, it's all, you know, just strictly business, okay? And I'm looking at a group that you chose to run because you wanted to represent your people. Now, there were people that I know that asked, well, what's the salary? And they said, no, alright, well, I'm sorry, that is the kind of person I want to run your office anyways. That isn't the point, the point is that you hear everybody, and I'm sure that if any one of you guys went out to your, you know, district and talked to your people, they would say, I can't believe that the state and the federal government just voted themselves a raise. And here I am, they're giving themselves a three percent raise, and to them, that's not a lot, but you know what? I just got a one percent raise in my social security, it means a lot to me, okay? That's the difference, and that will always be the difference, is to, if you want a raise, okay, then you put it on the, on the ballot and you have the people vote to give you a raise, alright? I personally, I would do this job for nothing, I really would do this job for nothing, because, why? Because I'm representing the people, and I would take the time off, I take the time off from work to come here, and I lose that salary. But I come here because I enjoy what I do, I enjoy representing the people, and I know that there isn't a legislator in here that will not say the same thing, okay? They'll say the same thing, that they enjoy representing their people, and they're proud to represent their people. And if meaning, turning down a three percent raise makes me look much more like the man that I say that I am, then yes, they should vote to take away the three percent raise. They know it's not a lot of money there, it's not, really, the raise isn't a lot, I see some raises in here, they're a hundred and forty-eight dollars for the whole year for some of these people that are getting raises. But for us as legislators, we have to take a step forward and say, I'm with you, I don't believe that I should be voting myself a raise, and I will not be in favor of voting myself a raise. I'm sorry, you know, I'll fight that to the end, yes, I know that I've been here six years, I'm not like Tom, that I've only been here, you know, for much, this to be, he's going into his second term now, so, right, okay? But I've seen where we voted to take raises out, the first year I was here, they took the raises out at the beginning of the, beginning of the budget meeting, I remember when we were voting on it, okay? Bill said, I'm taking those, you know, the raises out, the next one, uh they were taken out, then we voted against one. But then, yes, I voted for one to give myself a raise, I regret that to this day, that I voted yes on that. I could have voted no, still got the raise, okay? But I voted yes, because we thought that we were getting, you know. You know, everything was going along, you know, and we were getting some things that we had asked for, but we haven't, but I'm sorry, but I voted yes on that one time. And that was only three years ago, I believe, right? Wasn't it three years ago that we got the raises?
Three years.
Right, last year, they were taken out, Tom made a motion in this meeting to remove them, and you guys all voted to remove them, okay? So it hasn't been, you know, well, we're getting a lot, okay? But if you wanna get a lot of money, don't become a politician in Swiggo County. If you wanna cut the, you know, if you wanna cut, you wanna cut this legislature in half, then we can pay twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year. But nobody in this room, other than, you know, maybe three of us, will want to cut the legislature in ta, in half. So I'm sorry, it, this is, this is a great legislative body, and I think you guys should all step up and say, yes, I agree, let's take the three percent out. Let's set the tone as to what we're gonna do in the future, thank you very much, I come back again next week.
It's good he won't be here for public safety.
Um you, you make a a lot of sense, and I'm sure there's a lot of people who agree with several of your points, however. When I signed up for this, I had, to be honest with you, I had no idea what paid, um and that wasn't why I I signed up. But um I look at it as, we're, we're, we're voting um on a budget, I mean, if you. There's a lot of detailing, you know, we don't go into every tiny little piece of it, we have, we have people, we have employees, we have chairheads, part of a head that that look at that, we, we trust them for something, to put the budget together. There's a value in in that number, whatever that salary is, there's a um inherent belief when we take these positions that. We um not only represent our constituents, but we do that extra for them when we can, the extra meetings, the people that we go and see, uh other than when we're petitioning in the middle of winter. But um at 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 no point do we wanna make it a burden on on us financially so that you don't have um people stepping up to take the position. I mean, I, I didn't take it to make a lot of money, I didn't, I, I didn't take it to shell out a lot of money either. I mean, if you wanna do a good job, you gotta pay a value for it, and the better job we do, I think. And 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 a good job that I see, the, I had no idea that people would be, and and that's fine, I I signed up to it and I'll, I'll, I'll be to every meeting I can, I can be to. I am still working, I'm two hours behind schedule today as it is, and will be Wednesday, and that's okay, I signed up for that. But there's, there gotta be a little trade-off, and there's gotta be a value in that salary, and and as little as that salary is, I believe that value's there. I don't feel um um any um problem with doing all the budget of all of them, so.
I'd just add a, just a little added point, um the uh school board is four times the time commitment, daytime and evening meetings, and we make nothing.
I'll, I'll add to this, I'll, and and I agree, you guys, Syracuse, they pay up, here we don't, and that, that's a problem with it, so, but that's needed in there. If you wanna work for nothing, go to work for the town.
That's not a point.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's right, and I can't tell you the number of constituents, because mine are pretty well schooled, they, they read what's going on, they're very astute with the computer. They should be, because I've got a higher. They should be, because I've got a higher educated constituency than most. They can't believe what I do for the money, they just can't. They said, why do you do this? I said, well, I represent you, you know, not for nothing. But we're not asked, again, it goes down to, Ed hit around the head about there's got to be some kind of value. The responsibility, since I've only been here six years, has increased. I have no problem with that. Now, I had a hundred, some people worked before me at UPS one time. I can take on the responsibility here, they're a piece of cake. There is a value. And we're paying some of our department heads, you look at the raises, and I know you haven't had time to go through them, it is incredible.
I would like to just emphasize that I think we all have very smart constituencies.
I do know. I just want to make one comment, which I'm not on the podium, but I, that around a few years, what I've noticed through the years is one thing. We got, our people, for approximately eight thousand people we represent, with twenty-five people are getting good service in most cases. You cannot do that with sixteen to eighteen thousand people. So cutting the legislature is not going to gain us that much. And we don't have a lot of people coming to the meetings of our own. They can't, they're out working. So, believe me, and Ed and I spent three hours in circus the other day to a meeting. I go to another meeting, I'm just taking myself, and I love doing it, and I do it for nothing. But the people that have to go to work every day is hard. We're trying to do the service to our people, get knowledgeable at the same time. And what I've seen in many cases in this legislature in the years, a lot of them are leaving and changing, but are not staying on and understanding what's going on besides the legislature that is out there in the public. Sorry.
Just want to make a quickie, sometimes we hear fellow legislators, fellow workers here in the county say, correct me if I'm wrong, so I will, because cold-blooded pragmatic. You know, I hear the statement made, every legislator out there enjoys what they do. I'll say, I don't enjoy what I do. I don't enjoy coming here arguing with people, I don't come here and enjoy listening to foolishness at times. I don't enjoy that. I do get a lot of satisfaction over some of it. I do generally get a lot of satisfaction. I didn't enjoy walking streets of foolproof, I got a level of satisfaction doing that. So this money, that's not necessarily why we're here, but I genuinely don't enjoy it. I just want to throw that one out. We make these statements where we include everybody, and everybody knows this, well, nobody knows that. These extremist things are absurd, are absurd. I come here to do a job and try to be relatively knowledgeable about stuff. But when people just lump me in and say, everybody enjoys this, well, one out of twenty-five does, I'll tell you that. Again, I do get a level of satisfaction, so yeah, if you want to make that correction, when somebody says, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to lump me into something, I'll correct you when you're wrong. Do we have a first and a second? All in favor?
Of the amendment?
Of the amendment.
The amendment, oh.
You two are?
We are both in favor of the motion.
I just want to clarify one thing in this budget section as a whole. We're not doing the, we're not including the legislative items other than the ones we've already approved separately, correct? I just wanted to make sure, because like cooperative extension, that goes through the IDA. So make sure everybody knows what we're going on.
Right, which one of the rules we're referring to is page seven, the other payment lines that have a project description on them. Many of those report to other committees will be handled by each committee.
So we're just back to, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion for. Next up is real property. Page twenty-seven.
If you have any questions, but really simple summary is salaries below are up about eight thousand. I have what the overall budget is only up five thousand.
First and second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? One for both. You're a commentator there, you're the dude. Next, public defender.
Page forty-four.
All public defenders.
Ready for me? Alright, okay. So my department has a lot of change happening in it, all from state mandates, legislative changes that are coming January first. We have significant funds coming from the state for the hurdle hearing funding, and it was there last year. We are still not, we did get our contract for year one, we're still working on contract for year two. What I want you to know about this budget is that none of the bottom lines are going to change. The spend's not going to change, I mean, as much as we can control what the attorney's bill. And the grants are not going to change, but there could be movement throughout the year within the categories, just because we're still putting the plan together for the centralized arraignment plan. There's some discussion about breaking out the northern courts, which would somewhat change the budget, et cetera. But the numbers, the bottom line won't change. So I'm just letting you know that if I come back in the middle of the year with, you know, a budget modification request, it's just because we had to shift where the funds are going. The bottom line increase to the county this year is up about two-hundred thousand dollars from 2019. Again, that's because of the state's last year increasing eligibility standards, as well as our numbers are really high. I wouldn't have known this if ILS hadn't been doing a statewide study. But they came in and they're like, we have no idea what it is with Saguaro County, but your misdemeanor felony numbers are so much higher than comparable county sizes. I don't have the answer for that, but they're probably about thirty-five percent higher than some of the counties that have the same population that we have. We don't know if it's because we're next to Syracuse, I have no idea. But those numbers are continuing to increase, our arrests are going up. So as the arrests go up, so go up the public defender expenses. The, you'll see in the budget, there are two large figures that are really undesigned funds under that hurdle hearing, and we're under five, I'm sorry, five four four, five hundred, and five four five, five hundred. Those are the funds that are probably going to shift and move throughout the year as we get the contract with the state and determine where that spending has to be. But it's, again, not going to change the bottom line because the expenses and the grants will stay the same. I have said to this committee before, Phil and I and a number of others had a meeting on this. I know this isn't the time to field the discussion, but again, I just want to plug, we really need to look at a public defender's office. That's going to be in the county's best interests. When the DA comes before you with his budget, his numbers for the CAP program are going to be nothing close to mine because he has salaried staff that will be working it. We have to pay stipends, we have to pay hourly fees to these attorneys that are going to be staffing CAP, and that's just one small example of how an assigned counsel program would be more expensive than a public defender's office. And just to make clear, I've already told Phil, if we go to a PD office, I'm not going to the PD office. So I'm not looking to get a job comparable to Greg's job, that's not my goal here. I may be talking myself out of a job, but it's going to be what is best for the county in the long run. So when you look at the numbers and you're like, why is your budget so much higher than the DA's? It's partly that, it's partly because I have to include that money that the state is giving us to improve the public defender's office, but we haven't quite figured out how we're going to spend some of that yet. But anybody have any questions on what the budget looks like right now?
Any motion for it? Second? First and second, any other discussion?
I just had a question, I, sure, you were explaining half of this while I was trying to read at the same time, but, you know, obviously, when you see, you know, six hundred thousand come off and, and like travel and arrangements and supplies, another six hundred thousand, and one note says you're not even sure if that's going to come through. Is it safe to have such small amounts when your request is so much harder?
Well, what it means is that six hundred thousand is money that the state has said in the contract will give us in the grant, but we don't know how to spend it yet.
Right, and I heard you say that, but this one it says that you're not even sure if the state is going to give it to you on the other supplies, right? It's under discussion, not approved?
Oh, the state will give it to us if we spend it the way they want us to spend it. So I've got to, that's what I, I was somewhat holding off doing the year two because we're not clear how to spend it, and we weren't sure if we're going to try to do a PD within year two. But what I do is I draft a grant proposal, I give it to my ILS staff, they go through it. If they approve it, then we can spend that money and reimburse us for that specific money. So I'm not spending anything until they bless it. So there it sits. So the only thing they have blessed is that twelve thousand dollars so far. But I will say that ILS has gotten quicker with turning the grants around. In May of 2019, I finally got my contract that started January one of 2018. I did get my contract for the grant that started January first, 2019, last week. So that's, they sped it up a year. And I hope that that will continue to be sped up because, you know, while that's a huge improvement, we're still ten months into the year that we should have had the money.
Sure.
Yeah, I like the comments that you made regarding the public defender's office. I think not only for the cost-effectiveness of the program, to make sure that we have an appropriate pool of represented, representation for our indigent.
Indigent defendants.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate for us to look at that public defender, and I guess I would kind of charge this legislature with the, as soon as we're done with this budget going into early next year, we really ought to look at that public defender office. I think it's crucial to our county, we're running into a very big predicament right now with having legal counsel that's available throughout our county to work at this program.
Well, and again, knowing this for the future, sooner rather than later because with the funding the state has given us under the hurdle hearing grant, we have to have whatever programs we're going to use that with in place by 2022, or they're not going to fund it. So if we want the state to fund the PD office, that's our type of thing.
Just kind of give some numbers to what I just said there. What's your attorney, number of attorneys right now that this is paying in this example?
Well, it depends which county, because I have felony misdemeanor family court. Family court has the fewest because nobody wants to do that work. Twenty-eight is the highest.
And remember, with the council, or the centralized arraignment program that we're putting into place here with CAPCor, they need to have assigned counsel at every single.
Yeah, you have to have one on call, you have to have one present and one on call.
Well, I know, and hope true to that plan, I'm all in favor of moving in that direction, we can work with the judges to expedite some of the delayed proceedings that are postponed time and time again, that brought up our costs for.
Well, I would think that our, the new criminal justice reforms that are coming through, especially with the discovery, having to have all that information within fifteen days, recommend I'm wrong, Sarah, but with all of those timelines that are being put in place, that's going to really expedite the whole judicial process. It's also going to take a lot of people out of the system too, particularly in the ground. So there's good and bad to that.
I can, you know, say from experience that the addition of our attorney staff at Human Services has not only saved the county money, but it's increased our efficacy.
I'm studying what questions do, I noticed most of the raises are about fifteen hundred dollars, but one is seven thousand dollars, is there anything for that, or you're?
That, what happened there was it was a staff change. We had someone, so both lines last year were for principal and county clerk. They got filled, one principal, one senior. So we had someone at the lower level, the principal resigned and moved down. The person that was senior moved up to the principal, and she had more time with the county. So, I'm sorry, like a step thing, I'm trying to correct the question. Uh, yeah, yeah.
First and second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You both?
Insurance is on page twenty-eight. This is the county's liability insurance, anticipating a slight increase this year. We don't know the exact premium number until it's given to us late in November, but it's been hovering around one point one, one point two. We usually do a placeholder of about one point one, but deductibles have gone up the last couple of years due to a number of accidents, so coming in around one, one point one five. So we've got a placeholder in there right now, one point two. And again, county attorney's office will receive the final number from later this.
Make a motion. Do we need a motion? Alright, first and second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor?
Aye.
Both? One for both.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session for a matter pertaining to proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by some public body, but only one publicity with substantially effective value thereof. Just read your paper.